Get on. Okay. Hello, everyone. Welcome to, welcome to the. Is it fifth now? Welcome to the youth town council. Hello, I'm Cameron Aiden. This is the council. Let's get on with things. So first of all, business to accept apologies for absence. Lisa, do we have any?
Yes, we have apologies from Amelia.
Amelia, okay. Okay, second order of business to declare, do we have any declarations of interest on items on the agenda?
I will be talking briefly about what's going on at Stratford-on-Avon District Youth Forum, and I'm the coach. There is an interest there.
Thank you. Alfie, does anyone else like to declare an interest in anything? No, okay. Do, do we have any written requests for dispensation for the closure of pecuniary interests? Okay. Do we have any requests for dispensation? Wait, no. Well, yeah, that's, that's related. Public participation. Do we have any questions from the public?
We have no one registered in public participation, season.
Okay, now, to approve the draft minutes of the youth town council meeting held on the fourth of November twenty twenty one. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to make an assumption that you all have read, you all have read and checked through the minutes. So I guess now we're going to, to vote on whether we accept, whether we approve the minutes or not. If you don't. Does everybody know how to vote?
Would you like me to set the poll?
Yes, please. That, that's a new feature of Zoom.
Yeah, go with me a second.
Oh, yeah. Lovely.
More. Yeah, that's unanimous.
Yeah, unanimous. Yes, well. Last minutes are approved. Lovely. Now, to receive feedback from the Stratford-on-Avon District Youth Forum, Alfie.
Oh, so, yeah, thank you. So we've got quite a lot going on at the moment. We, we've done the week that was our cooperation with Life Space and Stratford Calling, and that was based around mental health for young people, things like anxiety. We've actually, we didn't manage to get as much content in the small space that we initially planned. So we've decided to just continue that a little bit over the next couple of weeks to kind of finish that off. So that's called Stay Well Stratford. And we are continuing with our careers project. We've been doing some interviews with people from different professions for that. We have our spring general meeting coming up, which we fixed the date for now, so that should be good. And our end of me chase this project, you might have seen if you follow us on Instagram. Our first post has now gone out, so that's to raise awareness of the condition and try and support people who may have it. So there'll be one post a week over the next six weeks or so, and that's now begun. And then, last but not least, as it's Women's History Month, we have, well, I haven't, but some of the other members have been participating in that by putting some posts on our social media. I think that's it. Thanks. If you have any questions, we should start.
Thank you, Alfie. Now, oh. Jo, please.
Yeah, can I just say, I've enjoyed seeing all your posts for the youth forum, and can I encourage everyone who's on Instagram to follow it? I think, what, is it forum Stratford, the Instagram name?
Yeah, that's the technical name, if you just put in Stratford Youth Forum.
Yeah, so I would encourage you all to do that on Instagram if you're on there, follow them because they've got some really good content, and it'll be good for us to learn too.
Hello, yes, have anything they'd like to say to Alfie? We move on. Okay, excellent. To receive a presentation on Black Lives, on Black Lives Matter from life coach Leo Goldenchild. Leo, if you'd like to.
Hi. Yeah, um, so it's gonna be a bit of sort of spoken presentation on, on my sort of journey as, as an artist and as a, as a young carer, I guess, and the adversity that I sort of faced growing up. I was, I lived with my mom, it was a single parent at the time, in and around my area, out of the majority of different sort of boroughs and whatnot. There was myself and one other young person who was of Afro-Caribbean descent. And we faced a lot of adversities in terms of not feeling like we, we sort of fit into our, into our community. And whilst in school, I received sort of a lot of, a lot of racism. I didn't really feel that I, I sort of fit into, to, to, to how everything was run, I guess, to the point where I actually nearly bleached my own skin because of the racism that I was getting throughout, which is pretty, pretty crazy to say, I guess. Even when we had Black History Month, that was never really touched upon by teachers. And the one time that we had an occasion where we, we watched a programme called Roots, we dived deep into that, and I remember coming out of class saying, this is, this is cool, like, this is Kon Tukente, who was a slave who never, you know, labelled himself as a, as a slave. And, and I remember coming outside, being so excited, and the teacher turning around and saying, Leo, that's, it's, it's a myth, it's not true. And I was so disheartened from hearing that from my teacher, that I just didn't understand why. So as I was growing up, my milestone was kind of trying to understand, okay, why am I this complexion? Now, why do I have to be this complexion, you know? Am I going to continue facing so much challenges when I grow up? And that's when I discovered the help from a, a special needs teacher, Mrs Farrell, who dived deep into my culture and, you know, gave me knowledge and clarity that that is beautiful and that I might face challenges, but, you know, it's also a bonus, and it might mean that I, I might have to try that extra bit harder. And I discovered poetry, as I was saying earlier, I discovered a poet called Benjamin Zephaniah, who I'm in total awe of. For those of you that don't know who Benjamin Zephaniah is, he was somebody that the queen herself tried to present an award to, and, you know, this, this gentleman turned it down because he didn't, he didn't want to feel westernised. He was, he was doing this because it was a passion of his, he didn't really want the recognition for it. And with poetry, I began to create music and hit a milestone of performing with many X Factor finalists, going into schools and talking to, to young carers and South Parkers and talking to those that probably don't understand, you know, that, that the challenges that those from a different ethnic minority might face, which is, which is pretty cool, I guess. Is there any sort of questions or anything that could answer that? Or?
No? Please, man.
I was gonna say, just, just to put your background into some context, could you say, how old are you, Leo, if that's not a rude question? And, and did you grow up in Stratford?
Certainly. So I'm, I've just turned thirty, thirty years young, and I grew up in, I've grew up in Birmingham City. But I've, my place of sort of growing up was, I'm not so sure if you're familiar with, with sort of Sheldon and Hansworth. Hansworth was a, an area where there was a lot of gun crime, a lot of knife crime culture there. And a pretty deprived place, I should say. That's where I grew.
Right. I was just trying to get a feel for something I know, in a way, I know nothing about, I'm not even educated on this, but I wasn't aware that Stratford was an issue, but I suspect it might be. I suspect it's just all over the place, and it's just, but where the Stratford was.
No, that's, that's, that's a perfect question. I mean, I've got many friends that are of, of mixed ethnic origin who have experienced a lot of racism in, in areas such as Shrewsbury. I go to Shrewsbury a lot. That was where my, my music sort of picked up. And sometimes it can be often, there could be passive jokes that could be made or specific comments where, not that the person's coming from a racist aspect, but they don't really have knowledge to say, actually, I can't actually say that, that I might be offending this person in that area. So I think in, in areas sort of like Stratford, I know that I've got friends who have experienced sort of micro forms of aggression, I guess, against them, so trying to be the voice.
Yeah. Thanks, yeah. And I think I, I struggle with lots of diverse groups in understanding what is appropriate language, because appropriate language changes over time. And what was considered an acceptable word five years ago is now seen as being completely unacceptable. And there isn't a list of these are unacceptable terms, so that's one of my, one of my fears of putting my foot in it and saying the wrong word, that's a thing to carry around with me.
That's understandable. That is understandable.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, someone.
Carrie.
Hello, Leo. Growing up, did you have any trouble, like, making friends? Is that a bit too, like, just a question? Because if teachers are giving that impression, are they like, is that impression like through, like, kids your age? Or is it growing up? Or is it kind of a thing of all kids in your classroom, like, brought up knowing that black is beautiful? Or is it?
Yeah, that's, that's a very good question. I mean, growing up, I did find, face challenges of, of, of having friends, I should say. It's because I didn't know where to tie in. Everything had to change about me in, in terms of my walk and my talk and, and the person I was. Because I didn't know myself too much, let alone my culture at that stage. But when I got to sort of secondary school and I started to delve into who Leo is and what my culture is, is when I started to have one friend coming along, and then it would be two friends, then it would be three friends. And gradually you would, you would find yourself sort of, you know, building a rapport with, with new friends. There's a lot of young black lads in, in my community that grew up without their dads in their lives. Like, I didn't know my dad for almost eighteen years. So I, I believe that would have had a knock on effect as well when I was growing up, in and amongst the rest of the guys as well, as to, to why I faced a lot of troubles as, as well, I would say, back then.
Ollie.
It wasn't a question, but it was just agreeing with you. Like, me and my friend Lyndon are both mixed, we're like black and white, and we get a lot of microaggression, like you were talking about. Like, in school and stuff, we get a lot of people making comments about us. Like, they might not know fully why it's offensive, but it definitely, like, hurts sometimes. And it just, like, it's not a nice experience, and it just happens quite a lot.
I totally agree with you there. Ollie, I, I, I had an incident, I'd say when I was around your age, where I was stopped by a police officer. And I remember it as, as clear as mud. This officer had actually said to me, he said, what's your name? What's your name? I need your name. And I, I told him my real name, which is Howard, Howard Richards, and he laughed. So I said it again. I said, my name's Howard Richards. He said, it's not. I said, it is. He laughed again. I showed him my passport. He, he didn't believe that my real name was, was an English name. He, he didn't believe, he genuinely didn't believe, he didn't want to hear it. So I totally understand where, where you're coming from there, Ollie.
Eva.
In terms of you speaking at school, do you think your school let you down on not teaching you more about your culture? And not just for you, but for other kids to learn more, because I know in history, they don't always teach us, you know, we got taught about Florence Nightingale, but we didn't get taught about Mary Seacole. Do you think that's something that we should be approaching schools to, you know, expand their history?
Most definitely. I think they should, they should be, they, they should scream and shout more about it, not just about black culture, but, you know, identifying stuff within other cultures as well, you know, I'm very much for exploring everybody else because everybody's equal. But it's something that they definitely need to make more of a buzz about, as opposed to just, you know, having a, a colouring book and a pencil and, and a, a five second video. Most definitely. But is that down to the schooling system, or is that down to the teachers just not being passionate about the area?
You know, because I've certainly, I've certainly found, when I look at the kind of his, the way they teach history, certainly as they get closer to the modern day, it's more and more focused on Britain and the exploits of Britain itself.
Yeah.
As you go far back, you've got the bit like, kind of, all the other stuff, but then, as soon as you get past, like, the Normans, it's the UK just completely.
Well, I mean, one of the things that hasn't been touched upon, and it was only just by spurt, my nan called me a few months ago to say, you know, I'm gonna be on, they're, they're doing a documentary on Windrush, I'm in it, and she, she was in the Windrush documentary on BBC a few months ago, where they're actually sending those from Caribbean islands back to the Caribbean. And the scariest thing is, is it's currently happening now as we speak, but it, it's not being put out there in the mainstream. I know we've had Covid around. But there's people that have, from Afro, you know, Afro-Caribbean culture that have helped build, that have just been deported back and that have had lives here for sixty odd years with their children. But it, it's not really spoke about, which is quite, it's quite hurtful, I guess. But once again, it's these things that they're not talking about in schools, we're having to source it from, from other areas.
Alfie.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just wondering, Leo, it's really interesting what you said, and I was just thinking, like, for someone in this country who's not from an ethnic minority, what would you say is like, kind of the best thing that we can do to try and bring an end to these, like, these sort of modern racism things?
I would say, I mean, I, I wouldn't say, like, running the street and go to, like, a random black guy and be like, hey, can we be friends? But I, I would certainly say, be open enough to, to explore, going into a Caribbean shop, trying food, because that will spark conversation. Be open enough to explore watching Roots or Twelve Years a Slave. Be open enough to, to listen to, to the music. Be open enough to ask questions, like you're doing right now. I guess my answer to, to, to your, your, your question would be to continue doing what you're doing now, being confident enough that, hey, I'm not actually gonna offend this person, but I'm, I'm gonna ask, is, is what I would say, continue being, being you.
Ollie.
Like, we always talked about before, about teaching history, about black culture and Afro-Caribbean culture. I feel like, especially at my school, we only ever learn about the bad stuff. Like, we never learn anything. We've only ever learned about stuff like, you know, the random genocide, which happened, like, a few years ago, and it's just, I feel like we just never learned about the, the, like, achievements. I don't know how to describe it, but yeah.
Yeah, I get what you mean. I mean, it, it, it almost does feel like maybe when it comes to sort of that aspect of history, that it needs a, a total revamp of, of, you know, of a successful black or Asian or, you know, people that have, that have taken things to a different sort of calibre. I believe it does need a revamp. There's a lot of pupils that went to my schools that the teachers would say, you'll either end up playing sport or you'll end up in jail. It's never a matter of, you'll play sport or you'll be a pilot or you'll be something else. And once again, this isn't all teachers, but the, the small minority, I really want to express that. And I guess, yeah, I'd totally agree with you, Ollie, on that.
Carrie.
Um, would you say that while you were growing up, people would always find you, like, they know you were different? And that they, like, act different around you compared to, like, let's say, a white person compared to you? Would they act like, like, I don't know, like, different, like, scared in a way? Sorry if that's again too fast.
No. I mean, yeah, I mean, if we take it back to even when I used to walk to school, you'd have maybe the elderly that would cross the road. That, that was the normal, that was normality, that became normality. To the point where I might have to do my top button or do my top button up just to make myself, my appearance look a bit lighter. In school, when I was growing up, it was the more you was perceived as the darkest, and I was, I'm obviously of a dark complexion, was perceived as, was ugly. It was, it wasn't perceived as, as beauty. It wa, it wasn't perceived as that at all. So when I was in around my groups in school, I would be the one that would get a lot of abuse because of how dark I was. Now, the weird thing about this is, is it wasn't just those from white ethnicity, it was also some of those from black ethnicity. Back in the slavery days, there was a po, a slave, sorry, and it's called the Lynch poem. And this slave, mass, this slave, sorry to say, had sat down and he wrote everything that was going to happen in the future. And one of the things he said was that when he was in and amongst these times, the lighter complexion you were, the slave master would take you in the house and you were given the easier chores, washing the dishes, cleaning the stairs, the darker you were. So if I was living around those times, I would have been out in the fields, I would have been chopping trees down, doing hard labour. It still has that effect now, even within school, and I faced the backlash of that just because of having a darker complexion. So my answer to your question is, yeah, you do get people that are scared that will cross the road, and you do get the flip side of, hey, this guy's not the most attractive because he's pretty dark. Like, that's just not cool.
Jo.
Thank you. Incredible stories, Leo. Thank you for sharing them. The Windrush generation and the stories that have come out that, which are horrendous how people have been treated. You said it was your grandmother who was part of it. Was your mum born here?
Yeah, yeah.
And how, how, how do you, I mean, you said obviously how it's still affecting you now, is what, what are you able to do? Have you done anything to, I know obviously you're Benjamin, you're a poet, he's written a book on, is it a book on the Windrush child, hasn't he?
Yeah.
But how do you cope with that? How do you cope when you hear all these stories?
I mean, all myself and my little brother, what we've been doing is sort of posting awareness on sites under his company's name, videos, trying to approach meetings within the community. And it probably sounds bad, but because a lot of, I think, a lot of our culture has become accustomed to it now, it's come to a point of, okay, they've been very passive with it, which is making things even harder, I guess. So all we're doing is things by stepping stones, approaching and, and really trying to challenge, we're trying to get local food restaurants in place and on board and, and, and having conversations with my nan as well, because it is still happening. I mean, my nan came over from Barbados to help out here, to help with a lot of the, the buildings and, and so did my grandad. But with the help of the BBC, which my nan was on, he's spreading awareness. Or will it stop? Who knows?
No, it'll take time. And can I just also ask, do you still deal with racism now? Do you still get that yourself personally now?
Good question. I mean, verbally, I'd say no. In terms of, in terms of if, in terms of body language or being treated a, a specific way, yes. But it, it's easy to sort of, to label and say, you know, sorry, it's, it's hard to label and say that was racism or that's just this person throwing shade on me because, so I guess it's harder, but as I've got older, maybe I'm just oblivious to it all, but I haven't had it as much as I did when I was younger.
Okay, thank you. And one more thing, my gran, my mum grew up in Hansworth, but it was before the wars. But my mum's from Hansworth, so we've got that. Thank you for that.
No, it's no problem.
Eva.
In terms of when you were talking about school and how you were being kind of, like, kids were being mean to you, was there nobody at school you could talk to about it? Because it sounds a lot like bullying. Was there not a bullying council or pastoral that you feel like you could go to?
I had no, I had no, nobody that I could sort of confide with at school. In terms of bullying, there was no teachers I could approach. And the only person I, I did have, and, and the person, there was two. There was a gentleman called Mr Zanj, who was my mentor. But the problem is when I was given Mr Zanj, was Mr Zanj, in comes this guy, he's like seven foot tall, white guy, blonde hair, blue eyes. When I'm having this conversation about, you know, what's occurring, he can understand to an extent because he, he hasn't been there. And I know that sounds probably canary's disabled, the, the, the emotion would be a, a lot different to him actually saying, I've experienced that the same way. So although he could help, but to an extent, there, there wasn't many. I can name one black teacher in that school out of all of the teachers, and, and that was through secondary school as well that I could really speak with. And one of the other teachers I had was Mrs Farrell, who was a lady that worked in there, but, yeah, I did, other than that, I had nobody else.
Anything?
So like, with what you're saying in terms of music and poetry and things like that, and like, to kind of amplify minority voices through art as well as also free subjects like history, and I think that's really important and something that's definitely needs improvement. But have you, throughout your life and throughout your experience, how have you found that's helped you and others that you know?
Um, it's, I think, for me, it was, like, we talked about poetry, discovering Benjamin Zephaniah was like, oh my God, there's a, there's a black guy who's, he's, he's a, he's an awesome poet, and he turned down the Queen's ovie, like, this is great. So then, when I discovered that, it then became music, and then music was my outlet where I could say, this is how I feel. I remember when I wrote my first loop when I was fourteen, about not being certain of me because of my skin complexion, and no one could judge me because that was my story. I'm living that story. And that allowed my vocabulary to get better, because I was special needs in school, my handwriting was backwards. Open doors to spark conversation with other like-minded musicians as well. And it actually put me on my way to, to sort of getting into university and doing courses that I, you know, I really wanted to do, so. Although it was bad that I got racism, it was kind of like a positive, a, a perfect storm, I should say. It's kind of like a perfect storm. Yeah.
Ollie.
Like, what you said before about not feeling like you could reach out to any of the teachers about stuff. Not at my school, we do have teachers that you can reach out to if anything happens to you, like racism. But I feel like, like, from my experiences, the teachers, like you're saying, the teachers don't always fully understand, understand it. And sometimes letting the people off are easier than they should be to let off, and they get smaller punishments, and I think, like, personally, that I think they should. So maybe you are just educating teachers for people coming in and, like, telling teachers their experiences so they can fully understand next time something, or not fully, I don't know if it's fully understand, but like, understand to the extent where they can properly deal with the situation.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with that. I guess it's kind of like that, that, that feeling of no distance between sympathy and empathy and, you know, someone, when, when we have situations, someone who passes in life, we almost say, oh, you know, I can imagine, you know, I know how you feel. You can only hope to imagine how you feel, but you're not in that situation, which makes people, but like you said, education is key and and learning more and, 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 like you said, indulging in documentaries and videos and stuff will, you know, will hit a spot that, and okay, I need, there's, there's another level that I should be speaking to this person because that's not acceptable. So.
Carrie.
From your past experiences, would you say that they made you stronger emotionally?
Most definitely. It's made me a lot stronger. And, and weirdly enough, when I was doing my first job, Marks and Spencer's, I managed to speak to, this is when I was a young carer, I managed to speak to a this is when I was a young carer, I managed to speak to a guy who came to the Till Point. Um, and I was singing, I must have been in my own zone because I used to sing as a coping mechanism in my head. Um, and we got talking and this guy basically said, look, here's my card, if you ever want to, you know, sing professionally or get gigs, let me know kind of thing. Um, and we built a, a relationship. It was like, I, I called him dad, and this is a white guy, blonde hair, blue eyes, everything. And, and I've literally he's, he's brought me all through life, mark his name, he's in, he's guided me and he saw me for me for the last twelve years, I've seen him as my dad, um, which is, which is pretty cool. So it's, um, it's been good, it's been a, it's been an interesting time, um, I guess. So, yeah.
Do we have any more questions, Leo?
Okay.
Right, well, if that's the case, I'd like, I'd like, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the entire council for taking time out of your day to come talk to us, Leo. It's very nice of you.
Thank you, thank you all.
You, you can save for the, you can save for the remainder of the session if you want to, but of course you're not obligated to at all.
Okay, thank you all, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Leo.
I'll stick around for a bit and then I'll head on.
So well, next item on the agenda, then item twelve, to consider the benefits of virtual, the face-to-face meetings in the open. Would anybody like to start it off? Izzy, please.
So I think the discussion was about, um, so kind of obviously as things are opening up, um, we can potentially go back in person or we can stay online and kind of what would work best for people. Because I know, like, in some ways, it would be way better to be in person, actually be able to run off the body language and things like that. But then also it might be more convenient people, for people to do it online and just, yeah, kind of whatever people's thoughts are on that.
Yeah, I thought, does, does anyone, does anyone here not live within what you would, what you would class as a reasonable, like a reasonable distance away from the town centre where you could possibly come to the town hall if we do do um, in-person meetings, like every four weeks. Does anyone not have that ability? Hmm. Right, because personally, oh, Jill?
I was just gonna say, I think it was after school times as well, it wasn't just the living, it was getting
Oh, of course.
After school as well. So it's, it's more the times for those that go maybe to Ulster and the further fields one, I think that was the timings. That were the issues as well, but if everyone is fine with it, then obviously face-to-face would be good, sorry, carry on.
Of course, there are people who live, who go to school like in Ulster or in possibly, or not Coventry, because that's too far away, go to school in another town, so. Does any, it's a question of can we do it, really? And then we can start to say, would we like? Can anyone? Carrie?
Um, I read the, the extent on this that he sent out and it said something about, um, changing like people like everyone again, so like it's not all of us at one point, it can be like changed throughout the week if needs be. Um, I think that's a great idea. I think we should do that because then it will, um, give us a chance to, um, remain, um, social distance as well as safe for extra precaution and it'll give us a chance to like, if, if people don't feel comfortable around certain people, which I hope they don't, obviously, but if, if, if that is a chance that that does, um, feel that way, then it'll give them a chance to speak up and not be around as many people that could remain as, um, scary in a way. I hope that, I hope that no one feels that way, but if, if that is a case, um, that would be a positive way of looking at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Alfie?
Thanks. Sorry, um, so you chat, I'm just wondering, okay, uh, if you could just sort of expand on that a bit, is it what you mean? So as in, we kind of, we wouldn't all come to all of the meetings, is that the kind of thing, was it more having like working groups? Because I think everyone's sort of obligated to come to all of the meetings possible. I definitely think, um, like what we do is Stratford youth forum, we have a lot of sort of individual team meetings, um, with just a few people who are interested in the thing. Is that kind of what you're referring to there, just to check?
Yeah, it was.
Thank you.
Sorry if it wasn't clear.
Yeah, it'd be a bit, it'd be a bit strange if we all had to come to every single meeting on every single topic that we did. So, yeah. Um, Eva?
In terms of timing, would it still be the same time, but obviously for people who live further out or like go to a school or get back really, would times be altered or would it have to be the same time? Just.
Well, that's a question. I think the most reliable person on this would be Lisa to ask, so.
Don't know about that. Um, yeah, so, yes, I think we'd probably like to stick to five if that, if that's possible. Um, just picking up on what Carrie said, I think there is a possibility that we could sort of do maybe half, half in person, half view on, on Zoom. Logistically, I'm not sure how that would, how well that would work. But, um, another option I, I thought of is maybe alternate, alternate months. So one month we do an in-person meeting, the next month we do Zoom, so it's not, so if someone does struggle to get there and on time for an in-person meeting, then they're not going to be missing every meeting. Um, so there's a couple of options there for you to, um, to discuss.
Frankly, personally, I think for me, it would just be hard to remember which, which, which is going to be a virtual meeting versus face-to-face. I know in hi- I know in hindsight, it should be very easy. But still, there's, there's that tiny bit of me that goes, it's always going to go. What if I was wrong? So. Hmm. Izzy?
I personally think rotating would be a good way to do it because that way it means that it's a good mix because different things work best for different people and I don't think we're ever going to find a perfect solution for everyone, so maybe the best one would be mixing it. And then obviously we can do reminders ahead of the sessions as to whether we're in person or over Zoom and things like that. So I think it would kind of and my personal perspective would be it might be the best way to do it and just make sure that everyone's doing what they're comfortable with, if that makes sense.
Alfie?
Thanks, Adam. Yeah, um, I, I probably pretty much agree with, um, with Izzy there. Um, I think like some things, like it's really good sort of being able to screen share online. I think that's probably one of the few things that are actually better about virtual meetings. And I think in terms of remembering, um, which is which, like I know um, Lisa always sends out the calendar invites, um, which I personally find really good. Um, because then if you accept it, it just goes on to the calendar that's associated with, with, with them, whatever email you use, and then it, it can say on the invite, like, whether it's at the address in the town or otherwise it can just have the link with it.
Well, if we're all, if we're if we were going to be doing alternating, what? Lisa, would it be possible to set it up? So this is, this is my wild theory, by the way, so tell me, please to strike me down if it's impossible, but let's hope so. The people who can go to the can go to the, um, council meet, can go to the thing in person, do. But there's also a Zoom meeting on with a camera looking at the people there, so it's kind of like the people who can go will go, but the people who cannot and have to go on to Zoom also get in, if you know what I mean.
Yep. Um, yes, well, I know that, um, we will be working on something for the town hall anyway, because, um, the, you know, full council meetings will, we are still planning to stream them once, once we do go back to meeting in person. So yeah, that should be possible, that, um, we'd be able to set up, you know, a camera and something like that, but, um, yeah, I suppose it's just a matter of it being on a device so that other people can still participate in the meeting rather than just watch. So they can be on a Zoom call. Because everywhere else, I definitely think it's possible, I'm not sure how well it will work, but it's not impossible. So I guess it'll be an experiment, really.
Jill?
Yeah, we have discussed that for other things that are non-council meetings and in reality it will work, so where people have tried that in the past. Um, people who were on the Zoom or on the, the, the virtual side of it don't get the same interaction.
Yeah.
Person.
Yeah.
It might work as I'm running late, can't make it, could I log in and that's fine, but not as an alternate. So I think that is the better option. Um, I did, I, I personally think, but obviously it's all down to you to decide. But the alternate would work, it gives everyone a chance and as everyone said, you know, on the, on the agenda that comes out, it tells you where it is. Uh, so that will be a good reminder, um, as long as you don't get distracted, forget where you are. But yes, remembering to, to do that, so alternatives are good, so it might be that somebody wants to propose that as an idea and then you take a vote on it.
Alfie?
Sorry, thanks. Um, yeah, I was just wondering, um, it's been a while since I've been to town hall, um. But, um, because I guess we don't exactly know how things are going to pan out. And it's possible that for a while we might be able to meet in person, but it might have to be socially distanced. Um, and do you know, would there be enough room for us to be sat in there socially distanced?
Okay, um, yeah, through you, Chuck. And yes, we have got, um, our council chamber downstairs, but it's also, we can, that can be opened up into the committee room as well. So we've got a, a, a very large room that will more than accommodate all of you at social distance.
Thank you, Alfie. Um, does anybody else have anything they'd like to, uh? Go on. Carrie?
Would you say it would be easier to do it over the weekends, just in case people have like um, after-school clubs or anything like that?
Hmm. Lisa?
Um, from a carking point of view, then I would be able to do that, but it would mean that I would have to, um, shift my working week around, so it, it's the logistics from, from my side of it. Um, so again, not something that's completely out of the question, but it would definitely be easier to stick to a weekday.
Yeah. Izzy?
With that, I think realistically, if we're, so if it is a case of coming back on buses, we all live in Stratford anyway, so I'm not sure the difference would be massive in terms of being on screen or being in that here, and I, yeah, I think just kind of sticking with the same time we've got would probably work better. Just, I, I know, I know, I'm quite busy, I'm quite busy at the weekends generally, so with different clubs and commitments and things like that, so I'm not sure changing the.
Yeah.
Yeah, also just remember when, um, when you agreed on the date, I mean, it was you, you all as, as a committee that came up with the date and the time as the suitable time for you. So Thursday at five o'clock was what you all agreed on. With the, um, initially it was about all being in the town hall. Um, although we started in the pandemic, obviously we didn't think it would be going on this long, um. But obviously we can see that there's been, there are a few logistical issues. But five, five o'clock, you know, we put it into the constitution of all the, the standing orders based on your, all of your agreement, agreements. So I would still stick to Thursday at five because it's easier for, from a staffing point of view. Um, because obviously if you started bringing in any staff member on the weekend, it gets more expensive for the council. Um, also the town hall gets booked out on weekends for things like weddings and other events, that would make it harder as well. So you need to think about those. So Thursday at five was what you all agreed on. I, I think what you're looking at now is whether to do it, just to do it virtually or in person. And I think if somebody wants to make the proposal, because quite a few of you agreed on it, I was just to say potentially, do you want to do it alternate months? Somebody else has to make the proposal.
Izzy?
Um, proposal to do go into, I don't know, is that like a formal way I'm meant to do this, or is it?
No, just, just say what you think.
Okay, yeah, um, I guess to do an alternate thing of make, say whenever it is, um, whenever it's the, from words.
Do you mean alternating virtual and face-to-face?
English language seems to be failing me right now.
English language is no, English language is nobody's forte, don't worry, Izzy.
Um, okay, I'll set the poll up. So if, if, if everyone, anyone, well, if you do or do not agree with, um, Izzy's proposal, then you can vote now, please.
And can I just, and it won't be until all the council meets, meets back, it won't be like next month, because we don't know when we're meeting back.
Most likely be May junior, I suppose.
Yeah.
Or being well. Couple more to wait for. Six out of ten have voted, we need another two.
Well, am I meant to be able to vote?
Yes, I think.
I cannot.
No, yes. Okay, that's unanimous, yes.
As you know this year. Right, that's unanimous, yes, so it's settled when we leave our indoor panels, we shall, we shall be meeting, alternating virtual face-to-face, of course. There's always a question of when, of when that cycle's going to begin, but I'm sure we can discuss that when it comes to it. Um, so next, uh, order of business, to consider whether to continue streaming youth town council meeting. Would anybody like to begin? Alfie, please.
Thank you, yeah. Um, so I've had a bit of thought on this actually, and, um, obviously there's kind of two sides to it. Um, because having it not streamed, I think makes a bit more of a relaxed environment for everyone. Um, but also I think it is important that, um, the youth town council, um, is completely transparent and um, people of Stratford and other young people living in Stratford-up-Naven, um, sort of know what's going on. Um, so what I was kind of thinking is a suggestion is, um, rather than streaming it to YouTube, um, when it's, um, just record it and then upload it when it's done. Um, and if there's like someone's, if someone's kind of messed up, then you can maybe edit that out. Um, but also I think if people do want to join in the meeting, I don't know how this works logistically, Lisa. But what I might suggest is that they actually have to like join the Zoom meeting themselves. Because then I think it's a bit more transparent both ways, because then sort of like, I mean, they don't have to have a camera, but we can see them as well. So I think, I think in a way it's like the unknown that might make it a bit more nervous for some people. Um, but yeah, see what other people think.
Uh, Eva?
Um, I'm just kind of a question and then in terms of streaming, do we have a lot of people watching? Because again, if it's not like a massive audience who's watching us live, posting it like a day after or something, is just always want to relax things, I know when it's streaming, I go, oh, I don't really want to speak as much. But also. But also, it just makes it more accessible to other people, like not making them crash and torture right then and now when we're doing meeting.
Yeah. Well, Lisa, would you, please?
Yeah. Um, right. So to answer, um, Eva's question, I just looked on our YouTube channel. So our last meeting was viewed by, viewed forty-five times. So that's between, you know, a month ago today and now. So we're not talking, you know, hundreds of people. Um, also, like, I personally think during this meeting that the conversation has slowed a lot better. Without, because we know we're not streaming. And I personally even think myself feel better when I know it's not streaming. It's just, I think as soon as you know someone's watching you live, you clam up and it's just natural. Um, recording it, it's no problem. And then uploading it the day after or a couple of days after is fine, like, like Alfie said, editing it. So it bits out if there's pauses or anything, but keeping, you know, the important information there. Um. And as far as if anyone wants to kind of attend the meeting to, to speak, to be, to participate in public participation, you have to register anyway. To do meetings. Um, obviously for at the town hall, people can just turn up. That's, but that's different. Um, so you may have someone comment on the YouTube video, but personally, I'm not watching the comments on the, on the, on the stream. Because I'm writing notes. So it doesn't really make, wouldn't make much of a difference if we did it then and there or to, to upload it the day after.
Izzy?
Um, I was just going to say, I think recording it while we do it and then kind of sharing the things maybe most productive to share. So I know like when I was considering joining, it was actually, it was quite interesting to watch them and like especially the speakers, I found that really interesting. And I definitely think that's something that we should be sharing. It's like Leo today, I really, I think that was a really interesting talk and it should be shared and I think that side of it definitely needs to be, but then conversations like this maybe aren't so interesting or necessary to be shared and having the less pressure of being recorded, I think kind of the benefits of that, yeah.
Alfie?
Um, yeah, I was just wondering, I was just running back to, um, Lisa said, um, so like you can register at the moment if you want to talk during, during, during the meeting. So, um, I was wondering if maybe if we then don't stream it, if that could be ex- um, extended to anyone, um, who just wants to kind of be there, um, as they, because I think if it was in a town hall, it would kind of be the same. Where you can just go and sort of sit in if you want. Um, and then I think that means that it remain, it still remains accessible in case like anyone really wants to come and see it.
Jill?
Um, does Lisa want to answer? Alfie, at least she wanted to answer Alfie, she wants to do that first.
Yeah, sure. And so for our, um, other council meetings, we did for a little while, put the Zoom link on the agenda that we published on our website. But we have now stopped doing that. Um, because there was, it thankfully hadn't happened to us, but there's certain, certain occasions in other council meetings where some people could just, anybody, if they've got the link, anyone can join and can kind of hijack the meeting, if you like. So for a safety and security point of view, we wouldn't publish the link to the Zoom meeting. If someone wanted to come along and specifically speak about something, then they could, they can register by emailing our email address and they've got, you know, an actual matter to talk about. But we wouldn't, we wouldn't just publish the, the, um, the link so that anyone could join.
Jill?
Thank you. Um, yeah, just, I think you've already said, as you said, Lisa said it. Um, you've definitely been more animated as a group today because you've not been live. And I think partly, I mean, obviously Leo was a fantastic speaker. You could have gone on for ages listening to him. Um, so it was really great. So it, I think, personally, and I think Lisa's saying, you know, forty-five people have watched it. It's probably all Izzy's friends, as she said, they've all watched it. Um, it's good to have it because obviously as the year goes by, when some of you start to leave, um, if you choose to leave or you turn eighteen and you're ready to leave, uh, and others are coming back, it's a good reference. So as Izzy said, she, she looked up the meetings before she decided to apply. And you've said, Izzy, that it was really helpful for you to make that decision. Um, so it is good for a reference. The nice thing about being recorded, so if something really bad happened, or as Lisa said, and it has happened where you've had unwanted visitors, at least you can edit that out. But like today's one with Leo, you definitely want to show that to the public. That's got to go out there. But whether, you know, if you want to put the whole thing out or not, you can. I mean, nothing's gone wrong on this one. So you could put the whole thing out. But, you know, at least by not streaming it live, you've got that option to edit anything that, that potentially goes wrong out.
Hmm. Well, so far, there have kind of been two individual, but similar, I guess, suggestions. One being we release, we record the whole council meeting, we release it as a kind of singular thing. Editing out anything that people would prefer not to go in. Or we take the recording of the council meeting and only release it. We, we could do them as a kind of mix of the both, but we're only releasing bits which we, as, as Izzy, but are more, are productive instead of just releasing the whole thing that might bore anyone who watches half to death. But so, yeah. Saul?
Um, I think it would be good to, um, post maybe the whole thing, but I think you also have to think about, let's say if someone just wants to watch what's happened, if you've put the whole stream on there, it could be an hour, an hour and a half. Some people don't have the time in the day to actually go through and watch that whole hour. Um, so maybe just, um, editing the mainstream bits, um, and maybe even, uh, clipping the little bits uh, into different parts and then posting them just in case someone just only wants to go on there and watch that part. Uh, you could cut little bits and put them on social media. It could also boost your social media. You know, you could do all sorts of stuff with, um, editing and stuff like that.
Alfie?
Thanks. Yeah. Um, I just think that's really good points you made there. And, and I don't know, I hope, like, obviously don't do it. It's like going to be a massive task um, for Lisa, but I know that one thing you can do, um, on YouTube is put in timestamps, so you can go straight to it. And that could potentially be matched up to different items on the agenda. So people can just jump straight to what they want to see potentially.
Eva?
That was what I was going to say. There's a new thing on YouTube where you can actually like divide the time bar and label it. So if we had an agenda specifically, we can, and then people can skip to it because it's labeled and it has a timestamp.
I feel, and, um, Jill, some of that Jill has very helpfully said in the chat. This is, this agenda item is more focused on streaming. So personally, I feel that we could just make a vote on whether we should continue streaming on, streaming the meetings or not. And then possibly in a future council meeting, discuss this further. Is, um, everyone, does everyone think that's a good idea? Yeah. At least, um, Lisa, could you, um, I guess, please make a, uh, yes, whether we should continue streaming the meetings or not?
So just to clarify here, we've got a couple of people voting yes and a couple of people.
Yeah, I, I feel like people were a bit confused about wording.
Are we saying yes to Aiden's suggestion?
Oh, I, I thought it was yes to continue streaming and no to not continue streaming.
Okay, is that, is that how everyone's been saying in this? Because I don't want to get the wrong.
Oh, I was gonna say, wait, hang on, I'm confused.
How about we restart this?
I'll, uh, I'll restart it. So yes or?
Yes to the proposal.
Okay.
Let's, sorry, sure.
Lisa?
Also, so let's make it easy. Let's say yes for continuing to stream, no for not.
No for not.
Okay, I've got, um, six yeses and one abstentions. So the majority is six for no. But do not continue streaming.
For no. So we are to not continue streaming the meeting.
It will still be recorded and put on at a later date potentially, but you can discuss that at another time.
Next item to consider getting involved with Welcome Radio, Wel- Welcome Radio's Day of the Youth program. Would anybody like to, uh, begin with this discussion?
So if you've got it, if I'll take that if it's all right through you chair, because it's in the open report, if you had a read of that. Um, I was contacted by Welcome Radio whether, as to whether, uh, the youth council would be interested in getting involved with the day of programming. Um, they've already got, uh, Stratford Youth Theatre, uh, involved, um, STEM. Uh, at DM Compton, is that, uh, are running a project for it? Members of the sixth form hub of welcome schools and local scouts and guides and sea scouts are also involved. They're also hoping to get works and young carers, uh, local sports group, students from the college and other young people involved. So what they're hoping to do is it'll be a pre-recorded session. You can have, um, talk a bit about what the youth council do or what your plans are, and also just to have, um, to choose some music that you want on throughout the session.
Right. I was just about to ask what exactly it is. What's the, yeah, what session? Just so I had anyone who else doesn't know.
They want to do a day or a whole day on Wel- Welcome Radio of just youth groups and youth organizations within Stratford. And it's promoting, so it's promoting your group. So whether it's Works and Young Carers or, you know, this, the youth council, the scouts, it's just to, you do have a little segment and it's about what you're doing. And it'll all be pre-recorded and they'll send it in and they'll then play it in amongst music.
Izzy?
Um, so I've been on there before once and I think it's a really lovely group. And I think, why not, to be honest? Because raise awareness about things we're doing, get more people involved. It's definitely worth doing, in my opinion.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say? Right, well, I guess we'll go straight to a vote then. Um, Lisa, if you could.
Alfie got, did Alfie, did you have your hand up?
Oh, right.
Yeah, sorry. It's in a different place now. It's been really confusing me so much. Sorry about that. Um, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, um, maybe before we go to a vote, if we can clarify, um, is this thing that will sort of, what sort of shape will this take? Um, because probably my suggestion would be that people who are interested maybe form a separate group. Um, but I don't know if people wanted to do it like as a whole council thing and have everyone. Um, but maybe if we just clarify that so we know what we're voting on.
Um, Jill?
Well, Lisa?
Um, yeah, I was going to suggest possibly another actual little, just a short meeting perhaps. Because whilst the WhatsApp groups are good, I think for things that you want to do fairly quickly, you, you need to be a bit more proactive in actually saying, right, let's make a plan. Um, so if, if anyone specifically wanted to be involved with it, it doesn't have to be all of you necessarily, then, um, you can decide to be in a sort of a working party, task and finish group. And we could, I've just seen that Alfie's asked us a time scale for it. Uh, Jill, do you know when it's supposed to be?
Uh, the end of this month. I'm just kind of trying to find the original email, um, of what they said. So it's, it's soon.
Well, I, if anyone's able to attend a meeting, say, one, one evening next week, to make fun of, you know, what we actually want to focus on, then, um, I'm happy to set that up. So it's up to you guys.
Yes, so, uh.
But I think if I'm through you chair, if you just want to vote right now on whether you'd like to participate, then we can find more. Then if you do, I can get more information from Welcome Radio. If you decide you're not interested, then there's no point in following it up.
And if, yeah, and if we do, I think frankly it'd be useful to perhaps either create, you know, we can, we can discuss it in the WhatsApp group and see if we want to create a separate WhatsApp group about it. Hey, that's a vote.
Yeah, got a majority of yeses there.
Majority of yeses, so. We are go, we are going to be getting, getting involved. But in what form, we shall see, I guess. Um. Now on to agreeing topics for our speakers for the next youth town council meeting. Does anybody have any ideas? Jill?
Um, two things. First, we did talk about Stratford Music Network. Unfortunately, Claire, who runs it, is not available for the next meeting. Uh, but it's potentially for the meeting afterwards. So it might be something you want to then do the following one. Because obviously that was a topic you discussed at the last one. Um, I've also been approached by Stratford Lions, who they are trying to set up a sort of a youth version of, which is a national, um, organization. I don't know if you've heard of the Lions. Um, they are a charity, but they're doing Stratford Leos. And just before the pandemic, apparently they came to speak to Stratford School. And they were looking to have, um, a base there. But I was approached by, by, he's the chair of Stratford Lion, Shakespeare Lions, they are. Um, and they would like to make a presentation to you about what they do and what their hopes are and how they hope to have you involved. So I don't know if that's something that you'd be interested in listening to.
I can put a vote.
Does anybody have anything, Alfie?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, I said anything as we start to, um, get going, because we're still in early days, we start to get going. Um, I think the more connections to different people and organizations, we have the better ready. So I would certainly be in favor of inviting them.
Yeah. And I was just going to say for me, um, the fact that people are now starting to contact us to want to speak to you is really good. Um, it shows the word's getting out there. So for now, it's, you, you kind of go, yeah, let's have people talk. And it's soon, you'll be picking and choosing. It'll be like, yeah, not them.
Word escapes. We have to catch it. So, anybody have any other suggestions about speakers for next, not next week, next meeting?
Or just topics that you want to discuss. It doesn't have to be speakers at every meeting.
So.
Um, I don't know if it could be next week or the weeks after. Um, we could get, uh, Claire in to talk about the music. Um, um, yeah, that's just one idea.
Yeah, that's the one. So I just said that Claire unfortunately can't make the next one. She can do the one after.
Okay.
Yeah, but she's on the ball, but she just can't make the next one.
Right, well, uh, does anybody else have any other ideas for speakers? Jill?
I was gonna say at this point, do you want to, because with potentially now being able to go back face to face at some point, do you want to start thinking about projects that you're going to do? Because this was obviously one of the things you want to be able to start doing things. Um, so, you know, if we've got Stratford potentially, or Shakespeare Leo's coming to talk to you, give you a presentation for the next one. So, you know, if we've got Stratford potentially, or Shakespeare Leo's coming to talk to you, give you a presentation the next one, do you also then just want to start talking about your ideas again? And now there was the, the youth fair, the town council, but that will probably still be twenty two before that will happen because it takes that time and we still don't know where we'll be with big indoor group organisations. Is there anything, you know, obviously you've got to get started on that, your gender neutral campaign and all the other campaigns you've talked about. So by the next meeting, do you want to have in your little groups to talk about media and all the different things come back with things like where you're standing on this, you know, at the moment, there's been lots of discussion and debates on these topics. It's just, do you want to then stop bringing them back, start discussing them?
Anyone?
Yeah, I definitely think that's worth doing, and I think, can we propose a vote on the speaker for next time as well?
Yeah. Yeah, the only speaker suggestion that we've had so far is for the Shakespeare Lions, is that what they're called, Jill? So.
And they want to do a presentation to you.
Presentation to us, how lucky.
They want your input.
Okay.
Unanimous yes, so. Shakespeare Lions, next meeting, lovely. So, yeah. Well, I guess it also says topics, so. Quickly, while we have a couple of minutes left, would anybody like to suggest any topics for next meeting? Of course, we, of course, we can suggest things in the creating and agenda meeting, but this is just preliminary ideas floating around session. Alfie, please.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I put a message on the YTC media group a couple of weeks ago, unfortunately, I think you didn't, you missed it, Aiden, because you
Yeah, yeah.
Apologies about that, but I think that would be something that would be good to organise, to get the social media really off the ground. So if people like who are interested maybe kind of suggest dates and times, I might be good.
Yeah, well, we're gonna have to kind of organise it in a way that is viable to be able to say, okay, this is what we're doing on Instagram, this is what we're doing on Facebook, and we can see, yes, this is how we're going to lay all this stuff out. Relatively easily. Lisa.
Just a suggestion, if we do have a separate meeting about what we do about with Welcome Radio, we could tie that in with the media group, because it's all about publicity and promotion. So it's something, we could have a sort of a separate agenda for a smaller meeting like that to, to discuss what we do, for all of those things.
Jill.
Thank you, yeah, so may I suggest that with all the sub, subgroups you've got, that you start doing activities within those, start getting campaigns or anything going. And then maybe in four weeks, you might have something that you can bring back to the meeting and discuss, because at the moment, there's no point putting that on the topic if you haven't got anything to bring back, but it would be great if in the meantime, you've got all those, because you've all had quite a few good topics now that you've all felt very strongly about, and it would be good to have, we probably need to let Izzy know all the ones that we've done, I can't remember if we've added you, if you've been added to them, but you've got to remind me, there's the social media group, there's obviously the gender neutral campaign group, is there another one?
We did have that for learners, but that's obviously gone now.
So those are the two main ones, for now, so really, if you could get in the next four weeks before the next meeting, get the two groups active and running, and obviously within those groups, you need to get a chair to be able to chair those meetings.
We're definitely going to need to be able, get the media group off the ground.
Yeah, so both of those, and then bring it back, bring those two topics back to the next meeting to show that there's been some movement on them.
Right.
Time also think about any other projects that you'd like to get involved with, don't forget, you have, you will be as of next month, have that thousand pound budget, that you don't want to blow in all at once, but, you know, it's there, so if we do need anything. I think that we've got that budget.
Well. We definitely go, okay, we definitely go to be discussing this a lot, definitely. People in groups. Discuss things, get, get, get things all set up, because, yeah, we need to be getting this stuff off the ground in the, in preparation for the great release of humanity has locked down. So, yeah, does anybody have anything, anything else they'd like to discuss concerning topics for the next youth town council meeting? Right, okay, well. That's all the topics in the youth, youth clerk's open town council report, so by light them, the next date of the youth town council meeting, which is at five PM on Thursday, the first of April, twenty twenty one. Bring your best, bring your best friends, I guess.
Right, I'll stop the recording.